If I could have your attention, please, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting. This is a special meeting. Special.
No, special meeting. Right there.
He's jumping ahead here.
You're not retired yet. You're special.
You're all special. Regular meeting of the special council of the city of Ottawa, Illinois. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Awesome.
Especially here.
Gainier.
Here.
Michael Kraut.
Here.
Les. Mayor. We have five present.
You all stand, please, and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut at the minutes of a regular meeting of the council of the city of Ottawa, Illinois, held on Tuesday, July 3, 2018, and the minutes of a special meeting held on Thursday, July 12, 2018, both be approved as recorded in the permanent files of the city clerk.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Les, any discussion, any suggested changes? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. We have a presentation, and before we do that, is there anyone who would like to address the council? Okay, then we have a presentation regarding the IED pedestrian bridge that's in development. Harland Roland is here. Doland is here. That's what it says.
I've had it called Donald.
From IMEG to kind of give us an update on the project, as I understand it.
Good evening. My name is Harland Dolan. I'm a senior principal client executive with IMEG. IMEG is a national full-purpose engineering firm. I am the Chicago region civil team leader. As you may be aware, a year ago, IMEG acquired McClure Engineering to increase their civil capabilities in the Midwest. Prior to joining IMEG, me and Jack Nemonti were principals and spent over 30 years with McClure Engineering. The move to IMEG has been incredible. It's allowed us to grow, grow our services and our core. While IMEG has a major office in Naperville, they see the value of local service. They're committed to the Ottawa and the local areas, and we have renewed our lease in the Ottawa area. Now, going forward, I would like to give you a brief update on the pedestrian bridge project. And I have Pat Bayboy, our traffic engineer here, and Jack Nemonti that can answer his specific questions. I have some handouts, if you can see those. Oh, I'm sorry. What we have here is a preliminary layout of the path and the multipurpose bridge. It will be on the west side of 23, and if we can blow up to, you want to start at the north end?
So on this picture, the north is to the left?
Yeah. And that's because of the way the IDOT stationing runs. So the alignment at the south end here, as you can see, the orange is the property lines, the red would be the pedestrian multipurpose path. Some of our criteria we're trying to accomplish is to keep the path a minimum of 10 feet off the curb, and there's other various obstructions in the right of ways. So that leads the path to being southwest of the right of way, which will require some easements to construct. And we will proceed to help the village try to, the city try to obtain those easements. As we go further north now, we will have traffic signals at the crossings of the ramps. The path where we meander, it won't be straight, we'll have a little curvature to the path. That is the bridge that we can come back and talk with, a little bit of the options. And then, as we go further north, we can stay within, we will have one more traffic-controlled crossing at the ramp, and we can stay within the right of way for the remainder of the route. Now, this is a time-sensitive project because of trying to make the IDOT letting next year, so we can try and pursue easements in that direction. If we're not available to obtain the easements in a timely fashion, we have an alternate plan that would keep the path within the right of way. It would be roughly 5 feet off the back of curb for the start. It would require a small retaining wall in this section here where the right of way narrows up to its strictest point. So we do have a Plan B if we cannot obtain the easements to keep the project on track for a letting next fall. Then the third option we wanted to go over with you is the bridge itself. We have been looking at different alternates of what kind of our bridge options, of what's most economical and aesthetic. We, if, let's do the truss first. The first thing we had to look at was a single-span bridge, which was 200 feet, or a center pier and a two-span bridge. The two-span, we just got the soil boring information back, and a two-span bridge will be the most cost-effective structure to put up there. The center pier, since there already is a center pier with the roadway bridge, will not add any unsafe obstruction within the median, and therefore is the most cost-effective. If we had to span the whole 200 feet, you would have a much larger bridge structure, approximately 200-plus additional in cost. It would also have to have higher sidewalls and cross-bracing across the top with fencing, so you're going to get more of an enclosed feature. This would have four-and-a-half-foot side rails, and then the safety fencing that is required by the tollway up the sides. It would still have an open top, and we did do just a three-flyover to show you what aesthetically this bridge would look like. This was a bowstring bridge that we looked at originally, which is arch. It's more costly than the Pratt-H structure, which will be in the next frame. We are, if in concurrence, we're now ready to proceed with preliminary design and make our initial submittal to IDOT. And with that, if there's any questions, I can have Pat or Jack try and answer.
Any questions or comments?
Is it freestanding? I thought it was supposed to be freestanding from the road, so.
Yes. How far from the road would this bridge be?
The outside abutments will be the same as the existing bridge, but there.
From the other, from the 23 bridge, for 33 feet off the back of the curb.
To the center.
To the center, for 25 feet from the edge of the parapet to the beginning of the bridge.
The meandering sidewalk looks nice, but doesn't that not add cost and make it more difficult for snow removal?
I don't think it would have substantial cost, and when we do the final layout, we do want to make sure we run a template for bikes to make it, while aesthetically pleasing, also traffic flow.
Yes, it was designed, those curves were designed at a 20-mile-hour design speed for a bicycle.
I said, "snow removal."
That's the direction we were given, to make it that aesthetically, that aesthetically look with the curves.
And you will have to have some curves just getting out and off the entrance ramps.
Sure, right, I understand that.
Some of the other purpose of it is we're actually missing some of the boxes, inlets, electrical boxes.
That would make sense, too. That would make sense.
Other comments or questions?
Do you have any other displays or any other imagery for any other bridges, by chance, or is it Option A and Option B, we're going on one of these two bridges? Or are we still in the design phase of the bridge?
We were showing these two options still, so, and we were looking at, from a cost-span point, what kind of spans we would have. Originally, with a 200-foot span, it limited itself to the box structure and the bowstring were most appropriate, but there are definitely many types of bridges that we can look into.
From a design standpoint, would this be our first pedestrian bridge, and everything here in town, I'd like to see something a little bit more, kind of just the arch, or just kind of the box a little bit.
One good thing that just happened today is, up until now, we were kind of under the impression that it would have to be a single span, and when we found out that the center pier was a possibility, now, made it much lighter-looking options available. Before, they were just these huge things that went up eight feet and crossed, and it really looked like a real heavy, overbuilt kind of thing. Now, with the, and we're able to use the center column or pier, they're allowing for a much lighter-looking structure, like this one on the infrastructure. The main railing is only four feet off the path, which had that, before that would have been. And that's one of the reasons it's $200,000 cheaper, what the single span would be. We've also looked a lot of pictures of other bridges. There's one in Iowa City that I liked, and it kind of looks like this one, but it wasn't a possibility until this afternoon, when I found out that we could do it.
And this is an $80,000, $20,000 grant?
Yeah, this is. $2 million grant, and project, we're hoping comes in at 2.4 or less.
Mr. Les, there are things that you can add to it that we had to talk about the door, and the size was something, welcome to Ottawa, I mean, Abraham Lincoln. That sort of thing. We've got some piers out there that we've got some stations sort of just laid out on the flyover, that was all photoshopped in. There's a host of things that, yeah, you can do, it's going to add cost. If you want to decide that you want something different than that, now's the time to let us know. Basically, the bridge that we got, we know what the size is going to be, and what it's going to be dressed out like in the tail end is what else you would like to look at. We get, Harland's been stopping every time he comes down, every bridge he goes under or through, he takes a picture of. The mayor has gone all the way to Europe to take pictures, for us to consider. And I, of course, have stopped on my way to the kids up in Madison to take pictures of those bridges, too. We've looked at a lot of bridges to try to come to a conclusion, and we realize that, you know, this is the first time that some of you, maybe all of you on the council except for the mayor, they have had a chance to sit in on some of that discussion.
Maybe one other thing to talk about is the materials. I mean, right now, we're thinking Corten steel. We've seen a lot of bridges that really look nice, and they're blue and gray and all kinds, but they have to be painted and maintained, you know, and sort of Corten, allow us to not have to absorb that paintnance cost.
I think the Corten steel's a nice choice for the bridge. Kind of at the same time, I remember when we went ahead and awarded the contract and everything else, it was for engineering and for design and for designing the bridge. I thought we might begin a little bit more, because I had the bridge first, and we'd say, and say, so I didn't know if it was more, more within our business.
Not yet, because we just got the final soils report last week or so, so we're trying to narrow it down to the span. With the shorter span, we can go with the lighter structure, as the mayor was saying, and we can come back with some railing options. I think if we go with the, that we're going to use an H truss with sidewalls that are up four-and-a-half feet, there's some aesthetics and other options we have with the railings now, not just to have the cross railing. We did something, we're doing something similar for the Rockford Park District, where we're investigating different types of railings. So we can come back with some more design of the bridge itself. I think we're trying to pick the span and the structure type.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into Commissioner Michael Kraut's part of the agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut at the bi-weekly salary payroll of July 13, 2018, in the amount of $431,160.73, be approved and warrants issued.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Gainier, any discussion?
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut at the monthly expense report of July 17, 2018, showing expenses in the amount of $1,391,982.30, be approved and warrants issued.
There's a second. Commissioner Les, any discussion?
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut at the monthly salary payroll of July 6, 2018, in the amount of $10,850, be approved and warrants issued.
There's a second. Commissioner Awesome, any discussion? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut at the monthly financial report of city clerk Shelley L. Monks for the month of June, 2018, be received and placed on file.
There's a second. Commissioner Gainier, any discussion? Roll.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut at a resolution authorizing the execution of employment agreements for appointed city officials, and Darlene Newers, Lori Flanagan, Don Kiesig, and Gary Hoffman, all as part-time NCAD bus drivers, be received and placed on file for public inspection.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Les, any discussion?
I just want to let everybody know that NCAD is expanding, and we're moving forward, so we need some more people working, so we got them going now.
Okay, any other comment? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Wayne has one item of new business. Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut at a resolution authorizing the execution of a commercial real estate sales contract for property located at 1784 Chessy Lane, be received and placed on file for public inspection.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Gainier, any discussion?
Aye, Mayor. I just want to let everybody know that we've been working on a deal here, thanks to Tammy upstairs, and we've been working with buying a building from Bill Franklin at 1784 Chessy Lane. As you know, we were going to build a building across from the Public Works Department, but after taking a look and seeing what we could actually afford to do with the money we had, and being as it was downtown, and there's houses around it and stuff like that, with the buses leaving at 6, 7 o'clock in the morning and coming back 6, 7 o'clock at night, we decided to span out and see what we can do. We were able to find this property on Chessy Lane, which is basically industrial, there's nothing else around it. We're actually getting it for a better price than what we could have built, and it's actually bigger than what we could have built. And we've got to let everybody know, this is paid for by 100% grant from the state. We got the grant about, well, about a year and a half, two years ago, and it's actually taken this long to get this far, so right now, we're in the process right now of purchasing this land.
What's the sale price?
$415,000.
Motion's to place the contract on file. Any other comments? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, on Monday, July 30, from 10 to 4, at the Ottawa Historical Scouting Heritage Museum, we have a new opening there of letters and notes from the presidents. The oldest one is 1801, and these are all original, from James Madison, James Monroe, Lincoln, Andrew Jackson, James Buchanan, Benjamin Harrison, and these are on loan from the Illinois State Historical Society, and like I said, they're all originals, and they will be, it'll be open to everybody on July 30, and they'll be at the scouting museum.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Awesome, anything for the council tonight?
Has one item of new business.
Okay.
Moved by Commissioner Awesome at a resolution authorizing the execution of a utility easement agreement between the city of Ottawa and Stephen and Judy Strong, be received and placed on file for public inspection.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Gainier, any discussion?
Yeah, this is for the Route 71 sewer project. This is one of the last ones we have to do. Are we doing the other ones, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comment? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Anything else for the council?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Les, or Commissioner Gainier?
Nothing.
For the council tonight, okay. Commissioner Les?
Moved by Commissioner Les at the bid received from Advanced Asphalt Company in the amount of $542,378.25, be approved and paid for from the General Corporate Fund for the 2018 street maintenance program.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Michael Kraut, any discussion?
We only, we did receive only the one asphalt, or the one bid from Advanced Asphalt, and it was actually a little bit over percent, actually under the target budget of what we had estimated, so looking to go ahead and work that.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Les at the city clerk be authorized to advertise for bids for the Tornado Street resurfacing project. Bids will be received until Monday, July 30, 2018, at 9:00 a.m.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Michael Kraut, any discussion?
And this is for the grant that we received for the tornado relief to go ahead and repair some of the streets that were damaged during the tornado. Out for bid here, have a bid opening in July, awarded in August, and I have those roads repaired, completed here this fall of 2018, so we're hoping to get it done this fall, and it looks like we're on schedule to do that versus waiting another year until 2019, so the residents over there can trust assured that we're looking to get those roads improved here this fall versus next year, so.
Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Anything else for the council, Commissioner Les?
Nothing further, sir.
Anything for the council?
Nope, nothing.
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor. Just want to remind everybody that the American Bloom judges will be in town in the next couple of days, Thursday and Friday. I want to thank our employees who've done an incredible job. This is the time of year when the mayor keeps calling about every 15 minutes, saying, "Do this, do that, why isn't this done?" And things get done, and it's really, I think, for example, Fox River Park hasn't looked so good in a long time, and I want to thank our folks here for the work they've done, and also urge our citizens to ditch your grass cut. The award is not only based on what the city does, but what they see in our residential neighborhoods and what businesses do, so it's important that everybody appreciate that. So we'll move to the mayor's part of the agenda.
Moved by Mayor Eschbach that a resolution authorizing the execution of a proposal between the city of Ottawa and Whiten Company regarding the Jackson Street Plaza project, which has been on file for public inspection since July 3, 2018, be adopted.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Gainier, any discussion? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Eschbach that a resolution authorizing the execution of a proposal between the city of Ottawa and KLOA Incorporated regarding parking planning services on Jackson Street, which has been on file for public inspection since July 3, 2018, be adopted.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Kraut, any discussion? One thing I would say is it's much more than a parking assessment of Jackson Street, it's an overall downtown parking study. So I just hope you understand that. Any other comments? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Eschbach that a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract between the city of Ottawa and AVT Service Technologies LLC regarding valves for the canal project, which has been on file for public inspection since July 3, 2018, be adopted.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Awesome, any discussion? Roll call. This is for the big expensive valves that we needed. East End, right? At the east end? At the west end? No, the east end of the project.
It's on the east end. They were digging today, so.
Okay.
Hope we pass it.
Shame to bury something that expensive.
Yep.
Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Eschbach that a resolution reappointing Jamie Coomer to the police pension board, term to expire April 2020, be adopted.
There's a second. Commissioner Les, any discussion? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Eschbach that a resolution extending the time within which the city of Ottawa has to enforce a restrictive covenant for a buyback regarding property located at 806 Fulton Street be adopted.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Gainier, any discussion? This is the property across the street from Home Hardware. The buyer purchased it from the city for $5,000 with the intent to renovate it. Became such a dilapidated piece of property or building in the meantime that it had to be torn down, so they've invested 5,000, plus did the demolition. Contracts that they had to have it developed within a certain period of time. They're asking for an extension of another year, I think, because of their investment, and they tend to move forward that we should do that. 18 months. Any other comment? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Eschbach that a resolution adapting a stormwater water should master plan for the city of Ottawa be adopted.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Gainier, any discussion? Dave, would you tell the, explain a little bit what this is about?
This is a fairly straightforward stormwater plan that meets requirements so that we can get further reduction in our flood insurance for our residents. It's required for our CRS, and it basically came up with two recommendations. First, it demonstrates to the people reviewing it that we don't have watersheds from other towns going through us, like you do in the suburbs, and you have to work together. And then, secondly, it recommended that we adopt a stormwater ordinance, which we have already done. Other than that, it doesn't require the council to do anything, it just demonstrates to them what our situation is.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Eschbach that a resolution authorizing the execution of four annexation agreements between the city of Ottawa and various property owners be received and placed on file for public inspection. Be it further moved, a public hearing be set on these annexation agreements for Tuesday, August seventh, two thousand and eighteen, at seven PM in council chambers.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Awesome, any discussion? Roll call.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Eichel Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Eschbach that a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an employment agreement for an appointed city official and Timothy Geiger as deputy fire chief be received and placed on file for public inspection.
There's a second to the motion. Discussion? I just want to say that I was one of the, one of the city officials that sat in on the interviews for this position. And we interviewed five firefighters from the Ottawa Fire Department and four, I believe, from, from outside the department. And I, I don't think I've ever sat through a more inspiring group of interviews. Everybody was, appeared to be totally competent and probably could do the job. Tim Geiger, I think, had the support of all of us who interviewed him and even one of the other applicants. So we're placing on file a contract for him to act as deputy chief. Contract basically is what the prior deputy chief's contract was as far as salary and so forth. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Eichel Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Eschbach that an ordinance authorizing the sale of real property owned by the City of Ottawa and providing for public notice thereof for property located at two-oh-five through two-oh-seven West Main Street be passed and approved.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Gainier, any discussion? This is the vacant lot in the two-hundred block of Main Street, West Main. And we're talking with potential developers or purchasers of the lot. We think we've got some that are interested, so now it's time to start going through the formal procedure. The process will require is.
Is it a sealed bid?
Bid, it's a sealed bid process. Our minimum asking price is.
I think this one was, was this by?
On the.
Yep, this one's twenty-two.
Twenty-two thousand. We did the appraised value. And the successful bidder has, part of the deal is they have to agree to build a building within a certain period of time, a two-story building that's compatible with the uses and the, the, uh, feel of the buildings in the block, so. A comment? Roll call, please.
Awesome.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Eichel Kraut.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Eschbach that an ordinance authorizing the sale of real property owned by the City of Ottawa and providing for public notice thereof for property located at one-nineteen West Washington Street be passed and approved.
There's a second to the motion. Gainier, pretty much the same thing with this property. This is the one on the alley. We've also had quite a bit of interest expressed in that. What's the minimum on that?
Twenty-five thousand.